We're good.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adjust the agenda. So a motion to adjust the agenda as submitted.
Move.
For a second. Please vote. Motion passed. Convent Agenda. So a motion to approve the Convent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passed. March 2021 Monthly Financial Report.
Good evening. Just, um, sorry, that's why I'm... Balances to report. Fund One's at 20.5 million, Fund Two, 1.7 million, Fund Three, 13.5 million, and Fund Four is at a negative 205,000. I did hear today we got confirmation we will be receiving round two of ESSR funds sometime yet this fiscal year. Not sure exactly which month, but... And then also either today or tomorrow, not 100% sure which, the round three is supposed to be approved. So that's good news. That'll be a significant amount of money. We just have to now determine best way to use it, but it's good news. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion?
Have you seen... I was told there was something in the DESI, one of the DESI memos that indicated the amount. I had been working off the 10... They had indicated that it would be 10 ti... DWA SA said it would be 10 times the first...
Yeah, that's still what they're saying.
That's still...
Yeah, yeah.
So if that's, if that's true, that'd be somewhat like 2.1...
About 2.3 million, I think. Yeah, because we... First round was 230,000 approximately. Second round is 900 and something, and then 960, I think. And then third round would be about 2.3 million. So significant amount.
Any questions or discussion? Pirate Pride, Caitlin Donovan, Volleyball Coach of the Year.
Good evening. Is that more? Is that all?
No.
Okay. Coach Middleton here, and I have the pleasure of introducing Coach Donovan tonight. Most of you know Coach Donovan. I got to know Coach Donovan at the middle school the last few years as we have worked together over there. She took over our volleyball program in 2016. Since then, our volleyball team has gone 117, 42, and 11. They have been the undefeated suburban conference champs the last two years in 2019 and 2020. This year, they were district champs. They were also sectional champs. And she took our team, her and the other coaches, took our team to the first ever Final Four in program history. Went to Cape Girardeau, which is a long way across the, across the state, but it was a fun trip. I enjoyed going down there. We lost the heartbreaker to Parkway West in the semifinal match, but then they came back in a, you know, in a really tough environment to play a third-place match after you just losing the semifinals and you're kind of, you're kind of crushed that your state title dream is, is gone. But, you know, she got the girls focused, and then they went on and they pretty much dominated in Ernix Hall to finish third in the state this year. Along with, with, you know, that, that great season, she was named the Greater Kansas City Coaches Association Coach of the Year. And I'm going to read a little bit about that award and just kind of what the plaque reads. We had to trick her into accepting that award because she does not like to be recognized. I know she hates being here right now.
Sorry.
But anyway, so the, the qualifications for this award are coaches who know court protocol, who encourage and get the most out of their players, who focus on coaching rather than officiating, and who lead in sportsmanship. The plaque reads, Greater Kansas City Officials Association is proud to recognize Caitlin Donovan as the Jerry Thomas Memorial High School Volleyball Coach of the Year 2020. You know, while, while all the awards and the records are great, what I appreciate the most about Caitlin is basically the relationship that I see with her players. I actually reached out to a lot of her players, former and current, yesterday. And I just said, "Give me one word that describes Coach Donovan." So I'm just going to read some of those. Positive, hardworking, competitive, caring, supportive, dedicated, passionate. If you've ever seen her coach, she is definitely passionate. Goal-oriented, focused, observant, diligent, and humble. And again, I know she hates being here, so she is definitely humble. I know I reached out to her, I, I think it was after the sectional game, and, and I just, I sent a video of herself jumping up and down, and, and I just told her how much I appreciate... You know, you can fake a lot of things as a coach. You cannot fake passion, and that's something that, that I very much appreciate. So we are very proud to have Caitlin running our program and look forward to many years of success. So that's Caitlin. And I told her she did not have to speak tonight. So if you were wanting to speak, blame it me. I apologize. So thank you.
Congratulations, Coach.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Pirate Pride, District Health Team.
Hi. We are also here to talk about some people who don't want to be recognized. Come on. I am really, really proud of our school district as a whole and all of the teams in our department as, as we've monitored and adjusted this year. But this team right here, our District Health Services Team members, we have some more that couldn't make it. I, I am honored to support these guys and serve these guys. In a regular year, your health room takes care of boo-boos and scrapes. They also take care of mental health. They also take care of making sure that people are fed and watered. Lots of water, lots and lots of water. Mintz for your achy tummy, a call to mama because that's what you need, just an ear because that's what you need. They're really the healthcare home for most of our kids. Most of our kids can't name their pediatrician, but they can name their school nurse. And so they really are a huge support. This year, they've had to have multiple roles. In addition to all of that, they've had to run interference on COVID situations, help support our tracking systems, make sure that they were staying in their lane so they could be that safe healthcare home for our families, and really coach me up because I'm a doctor but not that kind. So I wanted to put them in front of you because I am so honored to serve them and serve with them. Their efforts, their heart has really been on display this year. A lot of tears this year, a lot of tears in our meetings. We meet twice a week to calibrate, and I'm just really, really proud of them. So if you'll humor me for a moment, I want to tell you who's who. Jenny is at the high school. Kelly is at Berry's School. Lisa's at Compass. Laura supports us district-wide through the DEC and Contact Tracer and Nurse for preschool. And Amber is Contact Tracer as well. And they, they make us all look good. They make everybody in this room look good. And I'm just really proud to stand next to them and drag them up here, and I also promised I wouldn't make them speak. But I thought that you should see their faces. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
And I think it's me again.
Shiverme Timber, Staff Recognition.
Okay, so this person actually wanted to be here, but she couldn't. And if I would have noted ahead of time, we could have gotten you a picture. But picture next to me, a fabulous and dynamic preschool teacher named Chris Fox. Our early childhood program, just like the rest of the district, had to monitor and adjust and figure out how to meet kids' needs in a full shutdown and a partial shutdown and quarantine instruction and all the things you guys have heard about. When you think of all that and you think of three-year-olds, it's kind of next level, I think. But Chris took the expectations from academic services of having a Google Classroom for her students and helped all of us at the early childhood level make that a reality. All of our early childhood teachers have a Google Classroom. All of our preschoolers with and without disabilities are engaged in those classrooms, which just let that kind of spin around in your head for a minute. But a lot of that's due to the creativity and driving force of Chris. All of our teachers have done a great job with that, but Chris keeps them going and provides them with content, divvies out the content amongst the staff for development. And she's really, really helped us all realize the potential of our little ones when it comes to something that can be as intimidating as Google Classroom, as well as our preschool parents. So she was supposed to be here in front of you tonight for Pirate Pride, or for, no, sorry, Shiver, for living our values. I'm sorry she can't be here, but I'm pretty sure she's watching. So thank you.
Well, Kelly, thank you.
Public Hearings and Presentations to the Board. A person wishing to address an item on the agenda must complete a request form. Vicki, do we have any forms, excuse me?
We do not.
Okay. Written Communications. We do have one letter at everyone's table. Is there anything else? 2021-2022 District Academic Calendar.
Good evening, Board. At your advice, we have reconvened our calendar committee and examined some things that you had asked us to look at. And those changes are reflected in the calendar that we're presenting to you tonight. In short, it accounts for 173 student contact days, 183 teacher contract days. We will start on a Tuesday, I believe that's August 24th. We have a student attendance day on December 22nd that will end our first semester. The teachers will remain as a full contract day along with our other employees and try to use that time to, to finish grades and kind of finalize that before winter break. We found that that was kind of a compromise to what our staff had wanted, what you guys had wanted, and reflected the desires of the people that participated in our survey. We had, off the top of my head, almost 1,100 parents respond to that survey. Vicki, 90 classified and 3...
189.
Okay, 200 certified staff members. So we felt like we had good representation. We have, we have passed that through Team Platte County. We passed that through Calendar Committee as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to our calendar that sits before you tonight.
Any questions or comments? All right. Is there a motion to approve the 2021-2022 District Academic Calendar as submitted?
So moved. Second.
Please vote. Motion passed. Wilson Auditorium Audio Visual Upgrades Phase 3.
Good evening, Board of Education. You may recall the last several years, we have made some improvements to this facility, here Wilson Auditorium, in regards to lighting and sound. This is the third phase of those improvements, which includes the wireless mic system and the wireless intercom system to assist with performances, student performances that would be performed throughout the year on, in this facility. And it ties in to our upgraded sound system that we installed last year. You have, we had a procurement process. We had a bid opening. We accepted two sealed bids. We got a bid from Progressive Electronics, an electronic contracting company. We are recommending the bid from Progressive Electronics for $70,077 with a 5% contingency for any unforeseen circumstances. Progressive actually did the first two phases in this facility as well, so they're very... They, they know the system. They, they put the first two phases in. They've done very good work. We've actually used the other company as well. They did the sound system upgrade to Berry last year. They also do good work. But two quality contractors were recommending the low bid on this particular project, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions that be heading.
Any questions? Not. Is there a motion to approve the proposal bid from Progressive Electronics for $70,077 plus 5% contingency for Wilson Auditorium Audio Visual Upgrades Phase 3 as submitted?
So one second.
Please vote. Motion passed. Thank you. Human Resources Key Process Update.
Good evening. March is the typical month that HR has the opportunity to provide our update to the board in regards to the things that we've been doing and working on. So without further ado, get started on this. As I, as I begin, I'd be remiss if I did not point out the staff, which we refer to as HRT or Human Resources Team, of Bobby, Dixie, and Kashka are integral to the day-to-day operations, whether it's welcoming staff that are brand-new to Platte County or working with our retirees and anyone in between. They, they truly are a great resource for my team and, and our team at, at Platte County, as well as many others at the DEC that assist us in our activities and responsibilities. I thought first I'd give you a quick, what I would call a district profile. We have around 250 classified staff and around, oh, let's say 370 certified staff, including administration. Our gender breakdown is 77% female and 23% male. Our race and ethnicity is 97% white, 1.8% African-American, and 1% Hispanic. We pull that out of our management system data. Just to give you a demographic of the teachers that we had in 2020, they have around 14 and a half years of experience altogether, about almost 10 years of experience with Platte County, making average of $55,000 a year. 69% of them have advanced degrees. It's about 10% higher than the state average, and all encompassing full-time staff is around 600. In, in regards to, when we bring a new employee, part of our process is called onboarding, is not only welcoming and trying to affirm their, their selection or their choice in Platte County, but also giving them the things that they need to be successful employees. I don't have to tell you that this year was a little different and a little more difficult for us to onboard staff as we traditionally have done, but nevertheless, we're transparent with our results and ask them, "What was onboarding like for you? Did we get you ready to do your job?" And this is everyone from an administrator to a substitute and everyone in between. So we'll take this data, we'll, we'll kind of crunch through it and look through the comments to see in that 15%, if it wasn't helpful, what do we do or what can we do to make it more aligned with setting you up for success as we go through. Again, knowing this year was a little different than, than traditional years. This is a, a quick graph or statistic in regards to when we hire them, we want to know, "How did you hear about us? What brought you into Platte County?" And this is just a simple demographic to show that most of it is by referral or our district website. Our, when we look at certified staff, we looked at the colleges and universities. For a couple of reasons we do this. We have great relationships with universities in our backyard, namely MoWest and Northwest. And you can see from the graph that we have a lot of student teachers, a lot of practicing teachers that we end up hiring. And that's good business. Park College is in that, that graph as well. That tells you we're recruiting local that should know us, that should be Kansas City native, and that traditionally, and I'll show you the data later, that stick with their choice. As far as the place of origin, we also track this. About 40% of the people that we hire are brand-new to the profession. And then you can see the breakout in regards to what districts that we are picking them from. Again, local districts, Park Hill, St. Joe, Smithville, all of those are what I would call our backyard. And leave good districts to come to our district for, for a variety of reasons. This is a simple graph that we put together to kind of show the breakdown in average years of, of service. When we talk about Platte County teachers, the blue line is basically they're in their first couple of years, and then they'll reach tenure, and then you'll see kind of the lines increase and grow in that red and orange category, which is what we want. We want people to come here. We want people to stay here. We don't want them going anywhere else. As you get further down the color grade, in the orange and the blue, obviously, it'd be nice to think that we keep a teacher from year one to year 30. Some retire early, some leave. That, that's just a very, that, that... We know that when, when we get to that category, we, we can't stop people from retiring, right? At 26, they're pretty close. Depending on their age, they might reach that full retirement scenario. But what we want to see is that blue, red, and orange stay pretty high, and that tells us that we're recruiting and hiring the right people. Speaking of that retention, I thought I'd break down, usually we do a three-year, five-year average, and I'll show you that in a second. But last year, as we ended and shut down in March, I thought it was interesting that we retained over 90% of our certified staff, or almost 93% in, in relationship to our classified staff, almost 87 or 87, and I can't read that, but it's almost 88%. So what it tells us is most people that were employed with us last year stayed with us. And to speak to that, we compare ourselves to state averages. And DESI puts something out about this time each year and compares the three- and five-year retention data. And if you use cohort data, in other words, the year that they started with us, and, and measure, are we beating state trend, or are we keeping up, or are we exceeding? I think this chart will show you from a three-year standpoint, 80% of the staff that we hired at, at state with us compared to the state average of 64%, given that cohort year. In over a five-year period, we're routinely in the, in the 70s or high 70s and 80s compared to the state averages in the high 40s. So I would tell you that we're recruiting, we're hiring, and people are staying with us, which means, I would argue, that we're fairly successful recruiting the right people and retaining most of those folks. When people leave, we give them a, what we call our exit process. We give them an opportunity to complete a survey and then participate in our offboarding process. And part of that offboarding process is to meet with representatives from HR. Typically, that is me, and I have a standard set of probably 12 questions and try to understand what the reason is for them deciding to leave and/or get information if there's anything that we could have done to retain them. And as well as, one of the last questions I ask them is to give me the names of few people that really truly made a difference here at Platte County. Because I want to know, and then I'll email those people and tell them what they said. So if Mike was leaving and he said, you know, "Gary and Doug were instrumental," and, and then I'll capture that and I'll send them an email and say, "I, I met with Mike today, and I just wanted you to know, you made his experience at Platte County special because these, these three things." And I think that means something to people, that they know they were a part of that, that relationship that kept people here. You can see from the graph that most people go in, or out, I should say, for retirement reasons. It's almost 50%. You can, you can use that breakdown of graphs for, for very detailed orientation. I certainly think that there are opportunities that people lean for that are wonderful opportunities for them professionally or personally. We certainly don't want to stand in their way. But I, I do feel like this is interesting data. We do the exact same thing for classified staff. We want to make sure that we understand the reasons that we, we attracted them as employees and then why they're walking out the door to go to other things, and whether that's in retirement or, or other districts or, or growth opportunities for them as well. So we, we try to get a, a picture from start to finish with their, with their time with us, however long or short that is, as to what their true experience has been and what do we need to do to enhance that experience so that we can retain more staff. As we look at our wellness opportunities, again, we had, we had changed insurance providers and we changed a couple of things. But one of the things that we ask folks to do is a, a simple biometric. Put in your, your information and it'll spit out a, a general report on things that, that, that you have filled in that might be indicators for your overall health and wellbeing. 98% of, of our staff completed that. They're not required to, but, but they did that voluntarily. From that, they, Aetna has produced a report for us, and it basically says, hey, based on what the employees put in, here are some conditions that you need to know about. And then we set up, or Bobby Wheeler sets up, programs for our employees that might include the 4:30 Challenge, exercise classes, healthy eating classes that staff can, can enroll in and they're free, and it just helps them work on their wellness goals and provides them an opportunity to use our facilities and hopefully get healthier. As far as the strategic plan, we have two objectives. Essentially, they're focused on classified and certified staff, but, but they say the same thing, that we want to work with our group to make sure our people are satisfied. We want to recruit the right people. We want to develop them, and we want to retain them. We, we evaluate that through use of data, but also through our annual survey that, that we ask staff to, to fill out. From that, we develop, the HRT develops our strategic plans and tries to improve upon last year or, or any trend data that we see. And I thought it would be important that we, we walk through our, our, our three tenants to recruit, develop, and retain. And I would show you that survey data that, that staff have, have asked us to, to look at and take action on. So from a workforce recruitment standpoint, part of the process is that we require our staff not only to fill out an application, but to go through an evaluation through Frontline. It's called JOCTD. And the reason we chose that is because it embeds some of our values as a district, and it measures that upon every employee trying to take that assessment, and it spits out a score. And the tighter they're aligned to it, the higher their score. And that tells us who to look at from a screening standpoint. If they're a nine out of 10, that's probably something we need to put eyes on. If they're a two out of 10, then maybe we'll hold off on that. It's not the only measure, but it is a measure. It gives us a starting point to, to select. We also connect our vision, mission, and values within our interview questions, within our performance event. And then as, of course, as we onboard staff, we're, we're making sure, and even with the final interview of me, they understand our expectations, that not only you know them, but you live them and you perform your work through them as, as we go through. And I already talked about targeting those schools that are in our backyard wanting those relationships for student-teacher placement, because we hire a lot of them. So the first thing that I, I pulled as far as evidence or, or survey data is our staff values are evident in our practices. You'll see both certified and classified staff. If you remember, that, that SPI number is 400 or above, we kind of... We kind of highlight that because that's our targeted goal. You can see the historic trend in that response. I also pulled, I apply our district's vision, mission, and values to my work. And in every single category, every single year, I'm proud to share that our staff have unanimously agreed that that's part of the work that they do on a day-to-day basis. When we ask about competitive pay, we ask both certified and classified staff. We have not been able to hit that mark, that SPI number of four hundred. And we use this data to kind of see, okay, where is our staff perception at? And what are we able to do from a budgetary standpoint to answer these questions? The same thing is true with workforce development. We have a goal of continuous improvement as a district. Our evaluation systems, what we have deemed EPIC, C-PIC, A-PIC, all embed that continuous improvement and align every single individual, even our superintendent, to those goals of continuous improvement. Also, our buildings and our departments are asked to do a CSIP using kind of a concept of continuous improvement to try and get better at what they do. So the survey results that align to that were, our professional development opportunities have improved my professional growth. Again, we haven't been able to hit that target from classified and certified staff, but I found it interesting, when we changed that question to, my supervisor encourages me to develop my knowledge and skills and improve my professional development. We hit it every single time. So my takeaway from that is that our evaluation tool is doing exactly what we want it to do. We want it to engage the employee to try and get better at whatever they do. And there's tight alignment to, that is actually happening. Now we've got to pull back and look at our PD to try and align that as well. As far as workforce retention, we do a whole bunch of different things to engage. We talked a little bit about the surveys. We, when Dr. Brown and I meet with staff after these results, typically it's April or May, we kind of drill down the results of these to try and get more granular on what some of the rationale might be for the scores, and how do we improve that. Team Platte County and Classified Committee are a select group of individuals that give us direct feedback. We meet probably five times a year, maybe six. There are a number of different things that we do for staff recognition, including SHIBERS, Years of Service pins, teacher service, and excellent in education folks of the year. And the survey results that I pulled are, I am recognized for service and accomplishments. Again, we were not able to hit in either the classified or the certified staff that four hundred mark. In regards to the district uses time and talents effectively, we have not been able to hit that mark. Some good feedback we had from Team PC is, what does that mean? Time and talents, you're asking two questions. Should we break that up, and should we drill that down? That's good feedback for us. Maybe we are using time but not talents, or using talents but not time, and that's skewing the data more. So we'll take that feedback and maybe assist us in asking a different question. I'm satisfied with the benefit package. I am assuming, we're talking about health insurance, but we have to do some more drill down to make sure that we understand all of the benefits that an employee might be thinking of when they answer or respond to that question. I'm satisfied with wellness opportunities. This is really, really close for both classified and certified staff. So I'll have to work with Bobby and that committee to see if we can hit that mark. I have an opportunity to be engaged in the development of decisions that affect my job. You can see, again, we're not able to hit those marks in either the classified or the certified staff. And I'm satisfied working within the Platte County School District. Kind of a mixed bag, classified, we've hit in every year. In certified, we've hit three out of the five years. So I think our retention data also speaks to that ranking or rating. As far as an update on Missouri workforce profile, I thought this, if you don't know, I thought that I would bring this to your attention. This is a big thing for us around the state, is it's our professionals. In our organization, we're growing concern. If you can think about a bucket of water, and it's filling up slowly, and it has a hole at the bottom. The water coming in is new staff, new to the profession. And the hole at the bottom is staff willing to retire, ready to retire. And it's a continuous flow, some in, some out. Well, the new data suggests that there's a thirty percent reduction in the number of people that are going into teacher prep programs. So that kind of shuts the water down a little bit. But there's also less people staying in for longer. So that increases that hole at the bottom, but now there's a hole in the middle, because most of the profile is not meeting that over that tenure period. And that's concerning for us, because it's going to become more difficult to get quality teachers for all Missouri school districts. And it's going to be particularly difficult to get those of high needs, special education, higher math, higher sciences. So districts are going to have to come up with ways to recruit, and we're going to compete with each other to do so. And that might be one of our challenges moving forward. As far as our strategic initiatives for the upcoming two years, we took all of that information, all of the feedback, and these are the things that we're going to focus on from here on out. We're going to continue to tweak or refine our hiring processes. And I need to do a better job working with our communications director and a branding opportunity to kind of sell who we are, what we represent, and why you should come work with us, why you should pick us. Other districts have the models out there, and I'm excited to work with Laura and try to put something together for us as well. We need to increase the documented processes. We have a lot of things going on that we share with BSD, or Business Services, or AST, Academic Services. And we all know this, but we need to do a better job of writing them down so that we have them on record, in case we need to refer back to them at a later point or when people retire. They take that knowledge with them, and we can't allow that to happen. We're going to continue to work through EPIC. We have a revision in the works. We need to work with Team Platte County and reps to kind of update or refresh EPIC, because we believe it's time. And then the next thing is to improve efficiency in our retention of subs. You guys see this every month, we hire five, we lose seven. So we go back to the bucket, right? We're putting some in, but we're losing more out. So we've got to find a way to attract and develop and retain our subs as well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. I know I went through that fairly quickly, but I'm here. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those and answer those for you.
Are you finding, with that thirty percent reduction in people going to education, it's getting very more competitive, of course, to get teachers? What's the biggest thing you hear? Is it pay? Is it the culture? What's the driving force to recruit a teacher right now?
It's a good question. I think for beginning teacher, it's pay. I think reputation, culture have something to do with it, but I think that's more important to a teacher that has been in an environment for a while. We've been fortunate enough to take teachers that make more in other districts because of our reputation and our culture and our climate. But when you go to job fairs, and they're searching the room, and they pick up your pay schedule, they go, booth to booth is probably an antiquated term, but that's what they're looking for. And so I think what I need to do is do a better job and work with Laura in that branding to try and sell who we are, what we represent, to pull them in. So if they're looking at pay, and there might be a fifteen-hundred-dollar differential in starting pay, what does the culture and climate do for that offset? Does that make a difference? And I don't know the answer to that, but we certainly have a lot of people that can speak to the culture and the climate of this place compared to another place. And so I think it's two things, Doug. It depends on who you are and what the profile is that you're looking for.
That's definitely a concern for us, with that being that competitive right now with teachers.
You mentioned EPIC changes. Do you have any idea what you're talking specifically yet?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Essentially, when we built EPIC, it was based off of the state model that had just come out, and there were new state regs that told us the components that it had to have. When we built that, we took a lot of the language, and tried to morph and condense. They had too many indicators and too many standards. So we tried to take a scalpel and cut some off and kind of condense it in. And we worked really hard for about six months with a group of teachers to try and create that. What we have found is that sometimes the rankings or rubric categories don't fit exactly. And it doesn't tell teachers what we rank on a seven-point scale. So what do you have to do from a four to get to a five? We want to put it in, pardon the term, teacher ease, so that they know exactly what a four looks like, but they know exactly what it takes to get from a four to a five. We, over the past year, we've gone through, and we kind of trimmed that even more, tried to put it in a more generic form. And then we worked with Heidi Mick, who was a teacher here at High School. And she worked with us last year to really refine that and make sure that it was clear to teachers what the expectation was, what the ranking was. And we were all ready to roll it out, and then COVID hit. So it's been kind of a shelf document for us, because we, quite frankly, had to focus on other things. But our draft version is ready to go. We just need the opportunity to get teachers in a room, because it's messy work, and we need to post it. We need to have dialogue and discussion, and we need to be close in proximity to really get our work done. So we're hoping that next year, we can do our work, and that refresh will be complete.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Before I go, I just wanted to take the opportunity, you guys had a vote in closed session. I wanted to introduce to you John Sutton and Mike Powers. They're here in the audience, so I wanted to give them an opportunity to say hello and put a name with a face, so.
Hi, I'm John Sutton, and I'm so excited to be a part of the Platte County School District. I think when Dr. Gardner said about the culture and climate, and that is what draws people here, that is one of the reasons that I am so excited to be a part of Platte County. My husband and children are so excited and proud to be a part of this community as well. And so we're looking forward to just really serving the community and making you proud of the decision that's been made, and it's very humbling. So I just want to say that I'm excited to get to know each and every one of you and work closely with you in doing good things for our kids and families.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. Very excited to take on this new role. I've been doing the interim assistant principal this year, and super excited to work with Ms. Sutton to take Seagulls to another level. It's already a great school, but we're going to make it excellent. My kids are also excited to have their dad be the assistant principal at their school. They gave me a big hug and said, "Bye, assistant principal," just tonight. So we're happy to be Pirates, and we're ready to keep it going in the right direction.
Well, welcome. Congratulations. Middle School Building Strategic Plan Update, Platte County Middle School and Berry School.
Hey, Coach Powers. When they get to middle school, I don't know if they get so excited about having their dads in the district. It changes a little bit over time, but you know, it's all the fun.
Thanks again for letting me speak. Just want to report, after two weeks, we've had a very good reopening to the school year, so everybody calling first, and so I appreciate your leadership and guidance. I know last week, or last month, Dr. Brown spoke about all the changes we had to make, and he's correct, we did have to make a lot of changes and adjustments and different things. But we've been planning for a long time for this, so I appreciate the time we had to plan. Our teachers and staff and the community, and parents and students have been all great. And I appreciate the support from everybody in this room, because they really helped us make it happen. Everything from Dr. Gardner to getting us some staffing to help fill those needs, from the virtual absences, those teachers that are teaching virtual, to Dr. Brown, working with us, to Jay getting us plexiglass. We've learned a lot about plexiglass, and how it stays on desks, and how to maneuver it, and everything that Dr. B. telling everybody for helping us in ACTs. So I appreciate the support. The teachers have been fantastic. They've learned a lot, they've grown a lot, and we've grown with them, really. We're really, our plan, we've really tried to maintain over twelve months, a sense of normalcy in a not-so-normal time. So that's been tricky, but I think we've done a pretty good job of it. This picture, I love this picture, it's of course our mission statement there. But just looking at that picture of all those kids, I mean, today, Robert and I spoke about half of those different little things. So when you think of the individual learners, the safe environment, meaningful experiences, all of those kids need something different, and they all needed something different today. And I know the teachers met with them, but Robert and I got to touch them today. So I just appreciate the students that we get to work with every day. Some of our improvement focus areas, again, we created this at the onset of COVID. So we've been agile and flexible throughout this time. But basically, our two goal areas, safety, caring environment, and increase our academic achievement, which are kind of always our things. This year, some of the things we tried to plan for is we've had a great partnership with Pirates Rock. It's been here since as long as I've been here. But we identified the fact that we need some more meat, some more curriculum to those things to intentionally teach kids about character. And so Character Strong, working with Berry and Robert, was a great fit that we found. So we were excited to research that, find that, put that plan in place. Our goal was to also redefine our pirate time. We identified that we had twenty-five minutes or so before we had Character Strong, and we needed more time to do good things with kids, so we changed that pirate time. Then we wanted to research an assistantship component to the grade card. And then our increasing active achievement, really the engine of our improvement is our improvement teams, and just how those teams function. So we really wanted to make sure that that was in place, as well as instructional strategies during a pandemic. Again, being flexible, what are the new things that we had to learn about? What are the things that we need to implement? And then again, redefine our purpose of our flex time, which is really our tier-two intervention that is paired with or coupled with our math and English classes that all our students get every day. We've been together for a long time, so I think we're alright. White, white, whatever, we're good. So we're just going to walk through the progress for our first goal, which is really that social-emotional goal that we've got. And for us, that boils down to Character Strong and Pirate Time. Those are our two things there. Character Strong is a program like Chris talked about that we adopted this year, and working on some character and social-emotional development for our kiddos. And then Pirate Time is that time during the morning for the first forty minutes, like a homeroom or advisory that's really, really key for middle schoolers. And so what we found out last year was, we had, we just kind of put a lot of stuff during that time, and we weren't really using it the best that we could. So we went through and revamped that time and pared it down to make it a good usable time for our kids. So just going to walk you through our progress and the steps that we did. The Character Strong stuff that we did this year, actually probably couldn't have come at a better time. The things that we did with what our kids needed, what our staff needed, the connections that it helped us make, bringing those kids back was fantastic. And so the timing of it, if there was a silver lining out of everything we've been going on, the implementation of this program was fantastic for us. In May, I think that was our first PD day when we were in COVID, when everybody was gone. So we got to fumble through Zooms for the first time, and Google Meets and all that stuff. And we did a soft launch of In the Character Strong back in May, knowing where we were going with it. In that summer, we attended the training with our SLT, stands for School Leadership Team for us. So they did a one-day training that was called Reopening Relationally. And so they took us through the folks that Character Strong did. All these activities and things that you want to make a priority since your kids haven't been in school for five, six months. And so we went through a day of just learning how to do those things, set activities up for kids, make connections with them, and all that kind of stuff again. So that was a fantastic training that we did along with Berry. Throughout the entire summer, Chris, Jason, Jeff and I, we spent, the four of us, distance obviously, but we spent so much time working on this implementation, which I think is, even if we were in a regular school year, I don't think we probably could have implemented it better for the first time around. I thought we did a fantastic job, and we planned with those guys about every day this summer working on this stuff. In August, we had a one-day PD where we had a trainer that met with us, our entire staff, online. Did a fantastic job, set the stage amazingly well for us, got us in a good mindset to bring our kids back. And that went very, very well for us, and kind of set the tone for us on how to begin the program, but yet bring our kids back too. With this, you've got to do a lot of communication. You've got to communicate with your parents about the program. You've got to communicate with your teachers, what lessons are you doing, and strategies and things like that. And you communicate with your kids. So we had a lot of So we had a lot of logistics to work through, got through those in August. And then a, a big piece of it is not everybody's really, really good and ready to go when it comes to doing lessons like this. So we restricted some of our team time to where we could share effective practices and best practices for our, uh, our teachers where they could see what's working well, how do you get kids engaged? How do you get them talking and up and moving when it comes to the lessons? And then one thing that we did that was really, really successful is every Monday morning, these kids, when they come into their pirate time, they take a quick two question survey. It's called, "How are you?" That's it, two question survey. The teachers have it all set up, the results go to them, they can quickly see the kids are gonna rate themselves, how they're feeling on a scale of one to four. Four, they're fantastic, they're ready to rock and roll, everything looks great, had a good weekend. One, kind of gives us some red flags like, hey, something's going on, something's not quite right, the weekend didn't go good, had an issue on the bus, had an issue at home, whatever it is. And the kid, if they want to, they can put a little uh descriptor of what that is. Well, that information goes to our counselors and social workers. And so if they see a student with a one or a two, or the teacher had a chance to connect with them that day uh during pirate time, they get that information to the counselor. The counselor circles back around to them to find out how they're doing, what's going on, what can we help with, things like that. So as you can tell, there's a lot of movement parts to this, but it went really, really well. One of the things that we're probably the most proud of this year that we implemented in. Um, looking quickly at our pirate time, we extended the time with that. We got rid of a whole lot of things that we used to do during that time and really focused and streamlined it. Last April, again via Zoom all day long, we met with our leadership teams and came up with some new schedules, gave them to our staff to look at and present it on. Um, two things that we're doing at this time right now is we do uh grade checks. And you know that middle schoolers aren't very good at writing emails, you know that? Oh boy, them and emails, it's gonna get along very well. So we figured that, hey, they're not the best at communicating this stuff. So when they do a grade check every Tuesday morning, they go through, review their grades, leave their pirate time teacher on them and they send an email. We taught them how to send an email to their parents that says, "Dear Mom and Dad, how are you today? Here are my grades for the week, I got a test tomorrow, um, I got a ballgame, this or that." So we like intentionally taught them how to write emails and it says, "Goodbye" or "I love you, I'll see you tonight", that kind of stuff, and they attach their grades to them. So it's still a work in progress, but they're a whole lot better than they used to be. Whereas they just say, "Hey, here are my grades." Later, that's it. So we kind of combined some uh, some soft skills into that as well. So a lot of things that we've done in the area that was uh in, in on that first one, but knowing everything that the kids have been through, your staff and communities have been through, I think we picked the right things to work on when it came, come to that social emotional thing. The part that took a little bit of a, I don't want to say a backseat, but we really took our foot off the gas pedal was when it came to our improvement teams and instructional strategies. Our folks learned enough for instruction just to get through, teaching in a pandemic with everything else that they did. We didn't push the gas pedal down on that other stuff. We focused it all on previous stuff and uh next year, we'll get back on board with those things there. All right, just a couple more things here um to add, because Robert touched on a few of them, but the characters, some areas of success, the Character Strong, I'm trying to pull the picture up here. The Character Strong implementation was awesome. Um, I wanted to review the Dare for the Week, it's called Tour Champion. So our parents would appreciate this, but we announced this, we talk about it in our uh pirate times all week after school. Immediately do your tours and/or schoolwork first before anything else. Of course, it is hard, it will be worth it though. Think about how happy your family will be and you will have less things that you will need to worry about as well. So that was the focus for the Week, the Dare, so I hope you guys saw that at home. Uh, but it's been a great success for us. Uh, again, Robert talked about the pirate time schedule, we did stretch that out to 40 minutes. Um, it's consistent now. Um, the Character Strong lessons are consistent, the grade checks are consistent, the academic days are consistent. So you should see a theme about consistency and, and being intentional about the things we do that we realize are important for our kids. The grade checks and emails, again, uh we're kind of auditing that. That is one thing that we definitely want everybody to experience and everybody can do the same way that we discussed it. So that's one thing that we're auditing right now, but it's, it's been a real good success. And um another thing that popped up was our um small, the need for small groups. Um, Jen's worked with us uh several years on this and so a lot of times it's logistics of making that happen and, and the middle school setting or high school setting. And so our counselors and social workers have done a need assessment survey, found out what the kids needed, needed. And we have uh several groups, we had an anxiety group meeting, we had a self-esteem group and a study skills group meeting during the first semester with those folks. And then um there have been three groups on anxiety the, the second semester. So you can kind of see in a pandemic what kids are worried about, some of those things. So I'm really proud of our social workers and our counselors um putting in the work to, to make that happen for our kids. They identified as a need and we fumbled through some things logistically to make sure it happened and, and they were successful. So I appreciate their hard work. Uh, again, on our success on our academic achievement, we talked about the flex time. Um, our SST, uh Mrs. Smith was with us, Board of Appreciation week, the week after. And um she got to see some of our SST and how we go through our uh DNF list every other week with our kids, all of them. And we have interventions in place for each one. So um it, it could be just a check in with the counselor, it could be working with Mr. Hale in our pirate prep program to bring those grades up. And then we have extended the place with those kids, a lot of times with sonic earrings or something for those that they graduate out of that. So um it's been a really good success for us. And then again, like you said, just teaching in a pandemic, you know, teaching on a hybrid, A and B day, virtual instruction, Google meetings, you know, quarantine instruction. Everything that they've had to do, the teachers have had to do during that time has been something that popped up and has been a great success. All right, we'll finish up quickly here by just showing you where we're, we're headed next year to the things that we're working on. Um, for us, development, high performing collaborative teams, our PLC improvement teams is, it drives everything that we do, everything. And so we feel that if we get a group of teachers together, they're gonna learn better together than by themselves. And so we put a big, big uh priority on that. So making sure that we provide some PDs, making sure they're effective, they use their time effectively and they're efficiently. Looking at planning out curriculum, being the, I talked about student needs and how we can better assert those. The next area is, here's the social emotional wellbeing of each student. So this is where we're gonna continue our year two implementation with Character Strong. We got PD scheduled for next year already. And it's just continuing to refine and, and make that program even stronger and better for us. Uh, continue to look at our pirate time schedule, make sure we implement that better and, and make any changes we need. That citizenship grade that we wanted to get to this year, with everything else, that's one thing that got shelved and tabled, but we're hoping to do that to where we can um put on a grade card some of the soft skills that kids need. It's not just purely academic, you wanna make sure you kind of break those things apart because when we look at a grade card, we want it to be, what do they know in math? Not, not everything else. And so if we can have something else on there that says, you know, hey, are things kind of getting done on time? Is it presentable, you know, those types of things. Those are important skills too, but we don't feel they're part of an academic grade, we want to break those apart. So we're gonna hopefully uh look at those things next year as well. And then our last goal is uh, that's where we're gonna kind of get back on the academic achievement. Um, working on our uh tier three intervention for math support. We've got an intervention position, which is gonna be a great thing for us, where we can help some kiddos uh in math. And that will, we'll have a full fledged pyramid of interventions where we've got support at every level, tier one, two and three for kids. Um, and then instructional strategies, we got to get back on that uh boat next year. And uh we're working with our leadership teams right now to determine what those are. But that's kind of where we've been this year, that's where we're going. And you guys have just any questions for us? That is it.
Any questions?
I think uh Sayre Wright may need a refresher on that chores thing.
Yes, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Thank you.
What would you like done? Yes.
Just something.
Well, I think you did a great job, hit it off, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys, we appreciate the support.
Do you guys hear me? Okay, through my mask? Okay, awesome. Good evening, Board of Education. I appreciate the opportunity to give you guys an update on the great things that are going on at Berry's school. My name is Jason Hanniger, Principal at Berry. Um, and thank you again for having me this evening. I also would like to echo what Dr. Miller and uh Dr. Mueller have shared with you that the last two weeks have gone extremely smoothly. And that's not anything that one building or one group of people could do. It took a whole community to be able to pull that off. Um, I know our students are excited to be back in the building. Berry being a small school is quite funny when kids felt like we were so crowded because it really, I think it was just such a ghost town at 50% that it was overwhelming all of a sudden when everyone was there. But it's been a good first two weeks and again, appreciate the support. Something personally that I've always been pretty passionate about is having a vision, mission and values that are actually lived and breathed by everyone and not just words on a wall. And I've been in other places before from a variety of experiences where when you talk with staff and, and those that are responsible for this, can't always speak to it. And since I've been here, in the short time I have at Platt County, district leadership has always talked to us about our why. And why do we exist and what are we trying to accomplish and do for our stakeholders? Uh, I've felt that from the moment I've been here and I see that in our teachers and all of our staff members on a daily basis. And I bolded and underlined the four components that really stick out to me. Recognizing individual learners, uh for, setting them up for success in life in so many different ways, which we'll get into here shortly, um and providing meaningful experiences in the safe and caring environment. And so I think you'll find that the work we've been working on this year and the future goals tied to that very, very directly. Uh, and we're excited about the work ahead. So when I took over the uh school improvement plan that I was able to look at, was created pre-pandemic. And as um my colleagues had mentioned, things had to shift pretty quickly. And so we identified some areas in which we wanted to continue to grow and expand in the year that we've been in this year. Uh, they fall into two categories that Berry, academics and safe and caring. Uh, the first ones vary, you'll see a lot of similarities after getting to watch PCMS's presentation that we both are trying to achieve. Uh, the improvement team's processes is a crucial piece. Teacher collaboration with one another directly has a strong impact on improving experiences for kids. Uh, and at Berry, previously, uh teachers' improvement teams were grade level assigned. So it's interdisciplinary, which has its advantages. Uh, this year, they pivoted uh to being content driven. So our sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade ELA teachers get to collaborate together. Uh, that would just be one example of many. And it's been great because we've been able to have some pretty deep conversations about instruction within our content and grow our instruction value, which we hadn't been able to do uh in that manner previously. We've also focused on our instructional framework with a focus on relevant and meaningful experiences. And then finally, doing our very best to maximize the tools that the district has made available to us um to maximize our experience for teachers and students in a, in the hybrid environment, on AMI days, and for our fully remote students. On the safe and caring side, uh Robert and Chris talked a lot about Character Strong, which I'm, I'm excited to get to tell you guys a lot about it today as well. Uh, and so a strong implementation was crucial for us to kick off the year and to also weave the essential, eight essentials that makes up Character Strong into our daily culture. And if you're unfamiliar with that, their kindness, commitment, honesty, humility, respect, patience and selflessness. Did I get it, guys? Yeah. Uh, and then finally, it was important to us that we had a group of students that we can equip and develop to help their peers grow as well. I think we all know as, as parents that coming just from the adult's mouth is not enough. And it, it takes those peers to be able to bring them along and get them excited and engaged. And so we're happy about the work that we've done with our kiddos there as well. All right, this first slide is all about Character Strong. Um, and I've, I've been exposed to other social and emotional learning platforms. And what a lot of them don't get right is it's purely focused on just the education piece, the teaching aspect of it. Now what Character Strong does is it gives kids the opportunity to put it in action. So some refer to that as challenges, what Character Strong would refer to it as dares. And one thing I really appreciate about this program is it's not only for our kids, it's for our families, it's for staff. And so every week, for our staff newsletter, we push out a staff there to challenge them um in something tied to Character Strong. Uh, an example was this past week going into spring break, it was challenging staff to pick three to five kids that they know need that extra love and attention and to reach out to them intentionally, whether it's by a piece of mail, an email, picking up the phone and calling the families. But trying to push us to keep that connection. Every week, we send out a family dare to our families. Um, the most recent, one of the ones that I, I know a lot of parents and kids told me about was no tech table time. And it was about no technology at the dinner table, being able to engage in conversation. And I, oftentimes I think we think the kids might be bad about, I know I'm just as bad uh and have been working on that for a very long time. So uh, and then additionally, our student dares, we, we, we have each grade level participating in one on a weekly basis. And as they shared with you, this, this week, sixth grades was all about calling, flip the switch, being positive, finding positivity in your life and pushing forward no matter what the circumstances are. Uh, so every week, does this have a laser pointer on it?
Right. Okay.
Yep, so uh each week, we also pick one of the traits to recognize and to promote through in the building. And the example you see on there is respect. Our teachers then identify 10 students building wide that have lived that trait to its fullest. We call them down after lunch and we take their picture in front of our uh Berry banner. Uh, they're given a certificate and a mask that our front office, Laura Kump, uh creates with the, the trait that they were selected for. At the end of the year, we plan to recognize students at each grade level for each trait. Those, that's where the water bottle came from with the, the logos on there as well. Um, let's see if there's anything else I want to highlight. But it's been, it's been a great experience for all included, from students to parents and staff. As I mentioned, one thing that was really important for us was to have a student leadership group that could continue to expand from the student lens and not just from the adult lens. And so we assembled a principals advisory team. There were 31 kids that participated, which is approaching that 10% of our population mark this year um on our numbers due to COVID. And the first semester, we engaged in a leadership curriculum. And so we were really focusing on building a student capacity with leadership and character. And the second semester, we've transitioned into how do we promote this environment of Character Strong and the dares and the traits? And so these pictures up here, the, the pictures on the left, they've been engaging and creating skits, putting these dares into action. So we've been putting them out on YouTube and Instagram and Twitter and newsletters to try to promote that to kids and our families. So I've been super proud of their work and there's been representation from fifth all the way through eighth grade. The second thing I'd like to highlight uh is our step team. That's been a huge accomplishment this year. Uh, their first performance was, we were able to fit right in here in, in this auditorium and was an awesome experience for that team. Uh, secondly, Mayor Lucas came out last Wednesday uh and it probably was the highlight of my career to see how hard those girls have worked all year and to get to perform for their mayor was a pretty special event. Uh, truly it was amazing. Uh, and so I'm just super happy about the extracurricular involvement we've been able to maintain, even in addition to these two groups throughout the year. And again, that takes a lot of support and effort from a lot of folks. Something I really want to point out um is our staff and students flexibility, their flexibility this year, their resilience and still having a mindset of continuous improvement. It's truly been amazing. The top left picture is of our band and choir, they typically have a winter concert, winter performance. And they tried to get creative on how can we still get our groups to perform in a safe way that we can also record and send to our parents so they're able to engage in that. And it took a lot of creativity and coordination and I appreciate their efforts there. Uh, as you guys know, as parents, with AMI days coming up on inclement weather, teachers and students and parents having to shift last minute, I was so impressed with the teachers' classrooms, I was able to sit in electronically to see the type of work that they were engaging in. It was relevant, it was connected to the work from class before. An example I threw up on here was from our math classroom in the top right corner. I was watching kids on jam boards showing their work live while, while the teacher was able to see what they were doing from home and provide real time feedback. That's just one example of many uh where I was so proud of our staff and students to navigate both hybrid and AMI days throughout the year. Same with Coach Millen and P E and finding ways to get kids engaged uh physically on days when they weren't at school. That's in the bottom left corner. And I also want to second what Dr. Butel had mentioned for our early childhood sped programs. That's a picture of Kristi Unruh and her, and her fabulous team, working with our three and four year old preschoolers. Uh, if you want to brighten your day, going to sit in a preschool classroom in Great Beginnings is the way to do it. And what they're able to pull off and the educational experience and the safety and caring environment they're able to provide their kids in the midst of a pandemic has truly been inspiring. So in the midst of all of this, I think it'd be easy for any of us to say, we're not gonna worry about getting better, we just need to survive. But through our improvement team's process, our focus has been on how do we create meaningful experiences for kids and build those real world connections? And so that graphic you see on the bottom right corner, I thought was a great, a great reflection of what we've been working on. You know, what does the state say is important? What do kids care and, and, and have interest in? And how do we find that sweet spot? Uh, and so that's been our focus throughout our improvement team process this year. Uh, building bridges is what came to mind when I thought through some things I wanted to celebrate with you guys today. Uh, I think it's really important, being new to the district, the distance between the south and the north, it's really hard for our kids to get to experience and see the great things that are happening at the high school. great things that are happening at the high school. And so as I collaborated with Dr. Jones in transition, we thought it would be helpful for our kids to get to see as much of the high school as possible. So if you follow us on Twitter, occasionally, we get together up at the high school and celebrate and honor different celebrations and things that are going on at the high school. So our kids see the building, they see the experiences that they're going to have, and they get to see the leadership that they will get to experience when they get up there. So that's been a great partnership. On the right-hand side is when ten high school students and Dr. Jones and his team came down to lead a question-and-answer for our eighth graders, to help with that transition. And so that was a great experience for our kids to ask questions, since many of them may have never stepped foot in the high school. It was a really, really, really special day, and we appreciate the efforts they took to do that. Step team, I put this on here on building bridges, because two of our coaches are high school students, and they made the efforts twice a week to come down and coach our girls. And the amount of progress they made from the beginning of the year, where most of our girls have never experienced that, to by the three months later, performing for the mayor, without their help, that would have never happened. So it was an awesome experience there. And finally, NCC has had great collaboration in the midst of COVID. Jeff Green and Brian Roller have worked with our teachers to identify individual students to set up tutoring sessions with. And an example you can see here, too, is actually one of our NCC interns leading a review Jeopardy game on grammar and punctuation with one of our EOL classes. So I've been very fortunate to see the bridges being built, even in the midst of not being able to necessarily step foot in each other's spaces. So that takes me to my last slide about planning for next year. And I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with the process, but it was my first time going through this process of identifying goals for next year, and I really appreciated it. We looked at student survey data, parent data, and teacher data, and we also just took our own lens as administrators in the building and got together all of our buildings with district leadership and identified strengths and weaknesses. And as we did that, we started to notice some similarities. And so as I heard Robert and Chris speak, I noticed a lot of overlapping with us. The beauty in that is we can support one another in resources, whether it's the human capital, financial capital, things of that nature. So the four areas we want to continue to expand in, in academics is to continue to refine our instructional practices with a focus on meaningful experiences, relevancy through the improvement team process. Number two is to develop and implement a tiered intervention system for math and reading and writing through our FPC. When you hear PCMS referred to pirate time, our word for it is FPC, essentially a flexible time within the day to be able to address needs of our students. Character Strong, math, reading and writing, getting homework done, making up tests, things of that nature. And then finally, on the safe and caring side, I'm excited to work with our buildings and our district on developing our strategic plan to create a sense of belonging for all by creating an inclusive environment in our building. And finally, to develop and implement a student expectation reinforcement and communicate that with all our stakeholders. Bullet point number four is about a forty-five-minute presentation on its own. So what we're trying to do there is positively reinforce the expectations we have for kids. Robert and Chris talked about citizenship. How do we capture that? And that's something that we found a product that we're going to go ahead and pilot next year at Berry, to be able to communicate with students, parents, and teachers how kids are doing on the citizenship aspect of it. The positive reinforcement piece is essentially awarding points to our kiddos, and what we want to do from the financial literacy piece is create an environment where kids are learning to manage those points, or manage the money and how to spend it on a school store, on experiences, on things of that nature. There's a huge gap in financial illiteracy, kindergarten through post-secondary, and we're hoping to do our little piece in trying to bridge that gap for kids. So that's the main points I wanted to share with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think you covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
What did you say to the book date?
Not much to say there. There's several education reform bills that we're keeping our eyes on. They are, they have come up earlier and are advancing faster than I've seen in quite some time, so we're keeping our eye on. There's one, House Bill 543 was perfected yesterday, had several amendments that make it less damaging, but we're still very concerned about the bill in its current form. I think it probably passes out of the House, but you know, usually the goal is to try to not get back in the Senate, but we're not there yet. So I'll keep you posted as we move through the session.
Important dates. Spring break, no school. Next week, Monday, March fifteenth through Friday, March nineteenth, public informational meeting, virtual, on the April sixth, twenty-twenty-one ballot issue. Wednesday, March thirty-first, in order to participate, please register on the district website. School makeup day on Good Friday, Friday, April second, Municipal Election Day, Tuesday, April sixth. No school, District in Service Day, Monday, April twelfth, Board of Education reorganization meeting, we held at the, I would assume here, or at the District Education Center?
Why? We'll have to do it on Friday.
Okay. On Thursday, April fifteenth, at five-thirty PM. April Board of Education meeting will be held on Thursday, April fifteenth, at six-thirty PM, a reconvene from closed session, which begins at approximately six o'clock PM. PLC Day, two-hour early dismissal, Wednesday, April twenty-first. And the Northland Chamber of Commerce Excellence in Education, which will be a virtual event this year, Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, at six o'clock PM. Comments by board members and administration? Anyone have anything?
We've mentioned it twice, well, three times, on the, we kind of pull in service, pull in face, full-time person, and I just want to add all the congratulations, and I appreciate everyone's effort to get us there. I think it's been absolutely as smooth as it could be. I'm proud of the work everyone's done.
Great job.
Can I offer my comment to be taken by Dr. Butell and give you an update on our vaccinations?
Yes.
All right, we have. We, as you know, we've partnered with Kieran Medical Center to provide vaccinations for our staff members who want them. We've also been networking staff members, and quite frankly, they've been networking themselves towards vaccine. And so our list has dwindled down to about four hundred and twenty folks that will be vaccinating in a closed clinic on March thirtieth. Will be receiving the Pfizer vaccine, and then the follow-up to that will be April twentieth. So we'll be using AMIX days. Days a lot of tests by the state for pandemic-related reasons. Our teachers will be providing instruction asynchronously, so there won't be live instruction that day, so that we can get everyone through and vaccinated in our closed site. Because of our size, and because we're giving people, we're partnering with North Platte and also the Northland Catholic Schools, so that those staff members can receive vaccine as well. So that's our next step in this journey towards our hopeful resolution of the public health crisis. Do you guys have any questions about that?
We will have AMIX days on those days. What about playing the next day by ear, see how everyone feels?
Yep, so we're, we'll just play that by ear. I think we're in a pretty good spot, because we have a lot of staff that we've, again, already networked towards vaccine, so it's not like we're doing the entire staff, and also not our entire staff is seeking vaccination. Anecdotally, Pfizer tends to perform pretty well in that area. We're also talking about a twenty-one-day turnaround period, that I like that as well. But we'll just kind of monitor and adjust that. We've been watching and working with our staff that have been receiving vaccine, and we feel pretty good about what that looks like. But again, we'll deal with any staff on this as we usually do.
That's great.
Yeah. Thanks.
Anyone else have any comments? Thank you all.